Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, the Radnor Township School District Special Board Meeting of the whole board to conduct Policy, Curriculum and Finance Committee Meeting Business. Let's see, I'm going to turn it right over to Amy Goldman, Chair of Policy.
Hi, everybody. Is my microphone on here? Yep, okay. Hello, everyone. I want to start off with introductions, especially because we have a reconstituted Policy Committee at this point, and I'd like to welcome our newest Policy Committee members, Jeff Jubelier and Liz Duffy and Susan Stern to the Policy Committee. Welcome back. Mrs. McMenamin is our teacher representative. Our student representative couldn't be with us tonight, and welcome to the rest of the board who's joining us. If I forget who's on the committee at any given moment, you'll understand because we're newly reconstituted. Also want to say hello to our Solicitor, Ed D'Azio, and say hello to Dr. Stevenson, who's our administrative liaison, and ask him if he has any administrative remarks he'd like to share with us tonight.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to congratulate all our newly elected board members and our newly appointed members of the Policy Committee. I again thank Superintendent Bachelor for the opportunity to allow me to be the administrative liaison in this, for the great work that we will be doing over the next year. Just as an opening, tonight, we just have one quick policy, but just want to say that in January, we will revisit some of the policies, one of the particular policies dealing with that was tabled last month, dealing with some of the language for bullying. We will revisit that. In addition to that, Solicitor and I will be working to have a, bring some other policies relative that, some are time-sensitive and some that we around discipline in other areas that were discussed in the last year. We will come back to talk about this policy in a minute after public comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stevenson, and it's now time for public comment, but given a quick scan of the room, I don't see anybody, I think, who's here from the public who would like to make comment. No? Okay. So, we will skip public comment then, since no one is here to make any, and move right into our committee meeting agenda. The first item up on our agenda is the approval of the November 12th Policy Committee Meeting Minutes, and I would like to ask my committee fellow committee members if you are comfortable with the minutes from November, or if you have any changes that need to be made.
They're fine.
They're fine? Okay, terrific. So, we'll move on from the approval of the minutes. They are approved, and we'll move into our one and only policy agenda item today, Policy 201, Admission of Students. Dr. Stevenson, would you like to introduce that policy for us?
Thank you. Tonight, we, the one policy we will be discussing, Policy 201 Admission of Students. This is a policy looking at changing the date for kindergarten from September 30th to September 1st, and also establishing the age requirements for admissions to beginners, particularly looking at first grade, which was consistent with laws that were changed in Pennsylvania in the last year. I have the pleasure to introduce our Director of Elementary and Teaching and Learning, Sean DuKevich, which I took several times practicing. I hope I did okay. As you will find in a short time, he is really had become a great addition to our school district, and we're fortunate to have his leadership on certain items like this, and he will talk about the purpose of this proposed change.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. So, one of our priority projects this year is to focus on our enrollment trends and to look deeply at what are we seeing happening in our schools with students coming to Radnor Township. So, one of those things we looked at, we uncovered kind of an anomaly that exists. It was our previous cutoff, or current cutoff, I should say, September 30th for kindergarten students. So, with having a full-day program, September 30th is a highly sought-after date for prospective students coming in. When we looked at the other 50 districts amongst the three counties, so Montgomery, Delaware and Chester, 50 school districts, including Radnor, exist in those places, and 86% of those districts actually have a September 1st cutoff. So, we were definitely an outlier with regard to when our cutoff was for kindergarten. And looking closely at that and looking at the students who fell after September 1st but before September 30th, we recognize that many of these students required a lot of services and support because they were so young. In some cases, well more than 12 months younger, more than 12 months younger than other grade level peers. So, we can look at that as a pretty significant outlier. So, inconsistent with not only the fact that we're an outlier regarding the other 50 districts, or the 50 districts that make the three counties, and then also the needs that some of our youngest students were presenting, we were compelled to look at that and make a recommendation to change from September 30th to September 1st, and really fall in line again with the majority of the districts that surround us. And that's the context of this enrollment piece and the policy change.
Just before we turn it to the board for some questions, do you want to also speak to the first grade, because was that not also a change?
It was, and I'm going to pass this one off to our Solicitor.
Great, thank you. Under the current policy, the cutoff date for first grade is also September 30th, which is also a late date. Most school districts have a cutoff date that is much earlier. The reason we did not propose to move the cutoff date all the way from September 30th all the way up to September 1st was because, starting with next school year, students are of compulsory school age when they're six years old. So, if a student is six years old as of the first day of school, they have to be admitted to school. They're required by law to be in school. So, sometimes school starts before September 1st, sometimes it starts after September 1st, but generally, under any normal circumstances, school does not start after September 15th. So, by moving the date up from September 30th to September 15th, we get closer to what the majority of school districts in the area do in terms of a cutoff date for first grade, and we also ensure that all students of compulsory school age moving forward are entitled to enroll. So, that was the reason why the 15th was selected.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And this is a little unconventional format for us, so what I think I'd like to do is ask for feedback from people who are non-committee members first, and then we'll go to our committee members and then committee leadership to wrap this up and formulate a recommendation for our next week's business meeting. So, let's see. Bradley, Mr. Moore, Board Member Moore, would you like to start us off with any feedback on this policy?
Yes, just one question, and so all interests are out there. I ask this as a parent of somebody who started kindergarten as a four-year-old before September 30th last year. I'm wondering what it looks like for this policy to be implemented immediately, meaning starting for 2020 versus in a later year. I'm thinking in particular of parents who might have made plans with the idea that they'll be able to enroll their four-year, 11-month-old by September 30th of this coming year.
I would say that's definitely a variable and a consideration for the school board to make. You know, at this point in the year, we'd be looking at a January policy change potentially, and that certainly gives people a lesser timeline with regard to making decisions. That being said, at some point, we need to make a change, and although this affected you directly, it's about 10 students a year that fall in that month generally. Some years a little bit higher, but the average tends to be around 10. So, although it's a small effect size, it certainly is an effect size. So, that would be a variable for the board to discuss and decide on.
Thank you.
All right, good question. Let's see, Dr. Babson.
So, thanks for providing this information. So, you say 61% required special services and supports, and I'm looking at the bottom of the blue page that we have. Yeah?
Board, some of the confidential, just, you're fine. I just want to be careful we don't go into details about individual students, that's all. Not that we shared any individual students, but we did share some of the pieces for the board just on what had been the level of support. That's all that she was referring to, so.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you for that reminder. So, yeah, without going into detail, maybe you could just maybe compare our district in this regard to other districts perhaps, just to kind of fill out that point a little more. Thanks.
I don't know that I could speak with direct information regarding other districts and what their practices are with kindergarten. 61% is a large number statistically that would require special services. So, these are instructional supports, emotional supports, and if you just think logically, the younger student whose maturity is typically obviously not at the level of some of their grade level peers, many of them, you know, usually the majority of them in some cases, struggle with conforming to the norms of being a student and sitting and attending, especially for a full-day program. So, naturally, some of our younger friends, not all, have a challenge with this, and it's a disproportionate percentage related to the general public. So, when you think about that, if we're sitting amongst a group of people and many of them are a year older than me, then naturally you would think that they may be more capable in some cases because they're more ready and they're more mature, have had more experiences at that time. Research shows that around nine, 10 years old, third grade, is when these things level out, but it just takes some time. And students who start this young and have these challenges, sometimes the gap is so wide that it takes a long time to narrow it, generally speaking.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you, Dr. Babson. Lydia, Mrs. Solomon?
Thank you. I can't remember the answer to this. I'm sure I asked this. Did we consider September 15th for both kindergarten and first-grade cutoff?
I think we considered September 1st as the first consideration because it would be in line with most districts. Again, regionally, 86% are September 1st. There are actually two districts in Montgomery County that are September 15th, and there is, besides Radnor, one other in Delaware that's September 30th. There are two in Chester County that are also September 30th.
And everybody else is September 1st?
Everyone else is September 1st, yeah.
So, that's why, just.
Yeah, we would be swinging to the majority and being more in line with where most districts have fallen.
So, are we, I don't know if we can anticipate this, but are we going to have sort of a strange distribution the year we make this change because we're going to have more kids conceivably in first grade than would be in kindergarten? Like, are we creating a bulge or not?
No, we're just offsetting the start for just a small cohort of students that would fall between September 1 and September 30th. The average is about 10 a year. There's been higher outliers, about 20, but most years, it's around 10 to 15 students who fall within that birth month.
So, that's not going to be problematic for?
Again, it's a small effect size. It's still an effect size that we should consider, but it's a small effect size.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
We don't know with that, within that effect size, I mean, I think, good question, we don't know how many are recent move-ins versus have been in the community waiting. I mean, so even within that group of 10, there's no way of knowing necessarily, you know, how many might have been there waiting versus are recent move-ins as well. We did, not to open up another can of worms, we don't want to go there, but we did raise the question of, should we be going to August 15th? We decided not to, but we did, this did create a lot of discussion about just readiness and making sure that we're providing, you know, the best opportunities for our students.
Sorry, I just, I have one comment on that. I know people used to hold their kids back, like, there were people who had kids who had summer birthdays that were holding them back. So, there could be a real plus side to this, which is that we're going to start getting a cohort of kids in each grade that actually are more similar age. I know my kids, I had a student with an August birthday who had children in her grade who were two years older than her because of people holding their kids back till the last minute, and she went ahead and went, and she was August, so she wouldn't be impacted by this, but there were a few kids that were younger than her who, you know, they were kids in their grade more than two years older than them. So, this should maybe help smooth that problem out if we do this.
And what Lydia asked prompted another reminder to me, which I'm not sure you mentioned, and that is the grandfathered clause for first grade. Do you want to just speak to that? Because students who are headed into first grade, that cutoff date of September 15th, birthday date, obviously wouldn't apply, right? So, in terms of the bubble question Lydia asked about, I just wanted to, thought maybe it would be worth your mentioning that for the record, right?
Yeah, based on the policy, this would just affect new registrations going forward once the policy was approved by you.
Okay, let's move to this side of the table and see if Mrs. Monahan has any questions.
I just have more, similar to, I think, what was raised before, why the two dates? I mean, as a parent of kids just one year apart, I think that would be very confusing just to kind of make, you know, have an understanding of those cutouts, and that would continue year after year? Is that correct?
I'm going to pass this one over again. The 15th is a little more specific to some state.
Sure. Gets the mic too. I mean, I don't know how often the first-grade cutoff even comes into play anymore. I mean, I would imagine there's school districts that don't even have that in their policy. I was kind of surprised it was in there, to be honest, for me, so.
So, that first-grade cutoff policy, or cutoff date, is really irrelevant to any students that are in kindergarten, because once you enter kindergarten, you're sort of grandfathered in, so you don't have to meet both deadlines. So, if you're going to come to kindergarten in the district, then the September 1st deadline is the deadline that's controlling for you. If you're not going to come to kindergarten, then it's the first-grade deadline that applies. So, for different families, only one date will apply depending on whether they're going to choose to send their kids to kindergarten or not. And once you're in kindergarten, you don't have to worry about whether you're going to meet the first-grade cutoff, because once you're in kindergarten, you're in the system and you'll just move sequentially through the grades.
Just one other comment, do other districts have this dual cutoff kindergarten, first grade?
So, what I'll say about this policy is a lot of school districts are beginning to take a look at this policy because of the new state law that's going to go into effect in September. So, you're kind of at the forefront of this, and so a lot of school districts have not yet gotten to this point, but will be discussing it in coming months. I do envision that some school districts with the September 1st cutoff date for first grade will be pushing that back, and I think for some of the reasons, the educational reasons that the group has spoken to already today, I do think that it's reasonable to think that some school districts are going to want to hold their kindergarten date a little bit earlier, and that would result in districts having two different dates, but only time will tell.
Okay, thank you, and let's turn it now to the Policy Committee members, Mrs. McMenamin, our teacher representative. Do you have any questions? Okay. Mr. Jubelier?
I don't know if this is on, there it is. Amy, Chairman Goldman, when you talked about the, I was wondering about the birth date, when you have September 1st and if school starts like September 4th, does that, I'm just wondering if you have different years with different start dates at schools? I know that that is something that could be a concern if you have one year because of when Labor Day is, depending on the school calendar, how that would come into play if you have some exceptions of kids who are, you know, they start or they don't start, they have a birthday, you know, September 3rd.
I think that was the driving reason why, when we drafted this, the administrative recommendation was to pick a date certain, so a September, a September 15th date as opposed to saying you have to be six by the first day of school, because like you said, the first day of school may change, and from a planning standpoint for parents in the community, that's a little bit hard to anticipate. But by just picking the 15th, regardless of when school starts, you're safe with the current number.
My other question is, will there be exceptions? Will this be like, there's no exception? So, if a young, young boy, young girl, for whatever reason, their psychologist says they're ready, their parents say they're ready, they want to put their child in, will there be a process by which they can, I don't want to say appeal, but?
Yeah. So, the way the current policy is written, there is, there is a process by which, there is early admission to first grade. I don't believe there's early admission to kindergarten under the new policy, but there is an early admission to first grade procedure built into the policy. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Mrs. Duffy, do you have any questions?
No, I think Brad covered what my question was, and just, I think we just need to make sure that if we do approve anything in January, that we have a communication plan pretty readily so that we can avoid surprising anyone and plan ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. And Susan?
Thank you. So, a couple of quick things. I think the change in law is definitely going to create the circumstance with first graders that school districts are either going to need to select a date of, you know, August 15th or sometime after September 15th because of the very thing, there are school districts who start school the last week of August, and so a September 1st or an August 31st or an August 30th doesn't really solve that for that particular year, the very, you know, argument or the thought process that you articulated for us in your memo. So, I think this is coming, Nancy, you know? I think your point is well taken that, you know, once you're in the system, you're in, so if you're a family that's doing kindergarten, you're not going to pay attention to the first-grade cutoff because it applies. I am a little curious, we had a memo from you, Sean, I'm not going to go into the details of it, but the numbers of students who fell in that September 1st to September 30th cohort is much larger on the paper, so I'm wondering if the piece of paper is actually reflective of, was this number of years of data? Because it reads like it's just one year, and the number's far different than what you mentioned. So, is the data on here, is it a cumulative number of years?
So, the data that I submitted to the board, those are the students who currently are in kindergarten through fifth grade at each of the elementary schools. So, looking back, yeah, looking back.
So, this is historical data of five, basically five years of?
Yes, so five years.
That really clarifies, thank you.
Yeah.
So, at the end of the day, this change is not going to affect a large number of people. Okay, that's one. It's, I wouldn't necessarily have agreed with all of the categories that you articulated here, but the fact that it's basically 10 a year is what you said. I'm a little bit more comfortable with the January notice. You know, January to this coming September, if we were talking about the kind of number, you know, number of students that, it looked like it to me for a minute, that's a lot of kids, you know, and a lot of families to notify. I do agree we need an earlier date. For no other reason, we should just fall in line with our neighboring districts, which is actually the reason I wouldn't suggest August 15th. My guess, without seeing the data, is that August 15th would put us almost just as much an outlier as September 30th, just in the other direction. So, I'm comfortable with September 1st. I think since there's a carve-out, Jeff, for if there's a parent who feels very strongly that their September, you know, third child or their September 10th child really is ready for kindergarten, there is a process that they could come to our district, and with Superintendent approval, they could come here next year. Honestly, the sooner we, if we're going to enact this for this year, the sooner the better, and my only suggestion would be that we get this, if we make this change, my request would be that we proactively get this information out to maybe some of the area nursery schools, the area feeders for our district, so that parents are fully aware of the change if it impacts them. That's my comments.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make, I might have misheard you, Susan, but the waiver, the exception is not for kindergarten, it is for first grade only. I think you mentioned kindergarten, unless I heard.
I did say kindergarten, but I, I did say kindergarten, but I believe that there's a process to come to the school district and say, you know, we think our kid is ready, but you're, but the district's under no obligation to take a student who's not five by whatever date we bring, right? Is that?
We could make sure that same language, I'm going to look at, that same language that, for the appeal for first grade could be the same language for an appeal for kindergarten? What are your thoughts?
And I would just say, make it, if we're going to do it at all, make it for the one year only. If we were going to have any carve-out for a family who's in, you know, I mean, I made the plan for kindergarten years before, I think most of us did. I think that's what parents who are mentioning this are talking about, you know, we planned for nursery school.
That would address Brad's concern.
Exactly. So, but it would be a one-year sunset this year only, because then it is over a year's notice.
So, I'd like, yeah, what does our Solicitor have to say about that?
So, most, I'm not aware of any school districts that do, by matter of policy, do early admission to kindergarten. Usually, it's limited to first grade, but there's nothing that would preclude you if you wanted to build in a provision for the one year, or you could just direct your, you know, administrative folks, as the message gets out, given that we're only dealing with, you know, maybe, maybe 10 to 15 kids, we could just work with them on an individual basis. Some may not have a problem with the change, and there may just be, you know, one or two that may prefer a different outcome, and we could handle them on a case-by-case basis if that's, if the administration's comfortable with that.
Yeah, and honestly, I think it has more to do with, we've got to get this message, if we move forward, we've got to get the message out to those, to those area schools so parents can plan for next year. They need another year of nursery school or pre-K or whatever it is they're doing.
Well, I'd like to hear from Mr. Bachelor, what your recommendation is regarding this. The option is putting it into policy, I'm a little hesitant to do that because to me, it sounds like we would then potentially need to.
Oh, I wouldn't put it in the policy.
But administratively, how do you feel with regard to this issue?
I think we would be fine administratively, knowing next year and this change that, you know, if there was any concerns, if people reach out, we could look at it as a case-by-case scenario and make adjustments, you know? We'd look at each case and have a, set up a process to look and determine based on the, you know, this change and to see if one of the factors has been, you know, the recent change.
Okay, it looked like, Lydia, you had a question?
Well, just to what Mr. Jubelier said, do we want to state in the policy, right now it says that you can petition if, by the first day of the school term, do we want that, to have that instead say September 30th? So, in other words, if you have a child that falls in the window that we're changing, all of those people are allowed to petition to start kindergarten? I'm on, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Yes.
I'm on the policy itself, under the board, through the Superintendent.
That's fine, that's got it.
Or designee may admit, as a beginner, a child who is five years old and demonstrates readiness, right now it says by the first day of the school term. I'm wondering if we shouldn't say by September 30th?
No, 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 I think that that, I don't think that that means that's when you have to, that you have to ask for this, for this consideration by the first day of the school term. Is that what that means?
I think the child has to be ready by the first day of the school term. So, in other words, those, it's only the people whose birthday falls between August 30th and like September 3rd or whatever. So, should we not say that it would incorporate everyone who would have fallen in that window?
Let's see, Mr. D'Azio can?
Am I reading that wrong? The provision for early admission to first grade just means that a child who is five by the first day of what would be their first-grade year can ask for early admission, and that is language that comes directly from the State Board of Education regulations, which is the footnote there for number seven. That's the, that's the maximum extent to which the regulations actually permit a school district to admit students to first grade early. So, the regulations would not allow you, for example, to admit a four-year-old to first grade early. The way that the regulation reads is that school districts can admit a student as young as a student who will be five by the first day of the school term.
There's nothing about the notification timeline that's written in that language, and if that was confusing to you, Lydia, there's nothing about the notification that's in, written in policy right now.
I thought that we were going to put it in the policy.
So, what we were just discussing was whether we need, let's try to help you out, so whether we need or not, whether we need to put in policy for next year because of this change for a potential appeal process for a parent who has a child that is, would fall within that month, those 10. And what I'm saying, and I believe, Ed, you join, let me know if I'm accurate, that we wouldn't need to put it in policy, however, administratively, we will handle that on a case-by-case basis, knowing that we made the change, and we would look into any requests for potential appeal based on the fact that we just made this request in January. We could do that for one year without putting it in policy itself, if everyone's comfortable.
But I thought we were going to keep that going into the future. So, say, two years from now, you have a student who misses the cutoff by two days, and the parents want the child to start, we're not going to then allow that?
Correct. We don't do that right now with kindergarten, and we would, so we're not going to begin to do that with kindergarten. So, we would keep the language that's here for first grade only.
Correct.
And you're comfortable with that, Ed, for the process?
Yes, yep.
Okay, the only lingering concern I heard that perhaps, Mr. Bachelor, you can speak to, to close the loop, because then we can move on from this, is if, in advertising the change, will there be some things explicit in the advertising for someone who might be in a situation, a compromised situation, and not realize that with, that there could be special consideration afforded if they reach out?
I would.
I wouldn't advertise.
Yeah, my gut reaction would be no, because I'll be honest with you, people, you know, we read our policies, we're really good. Somebody's not going to come forward because they read the policy and said, ooh, there's an appeal. I think families that, once they hear what the cutoff is and they hear a change and there's, and they have a concern, I think they will reach. and there's, and they have a concern, um, I think they will reach out, whether they reach out, starting at the building level, to Dr. Stevenson, um, you know, Mr. Dukovich handles our, you know, enrollment processes, I think they will reach out, um, and we will hear from those, those families.
Okay, I appreciate, I'm not advocating for it, I just think, thought that I had heard that perhaps that was one hanging, uh, concern still hanging out there and I just want to make sure that everybody, particularly the committee members, because it's up to you guys to make this recommendation to move this forward for our first read next week, make sure that you are ready, based on what you've heard today, to move this forward.
Yeah, and, and it means to just want to add a thing, we might be also helping some of those families with those 10, because if you're, if you're, and, and having been there with a children and a summer birthday, um, we, we might, there, there might be actually some who just will appreciate that, oh, good, this is just made for us, this is helpful.
Okay, so, um, committee members, that would be Mrs. McMenamin, Mr. Jubelier, Mrs. Duffy, I'm just practicing here, um, Mrs. Stern, uh, do we want to recommend that this move forward to the full board for next week's business meeting for our first read? Is there a head nod, yes? Yes, okay. So that basically wraps up. I just, I, I know that we have a, an unconventional, um, sort of lineup here and that we're going to roll right into another meeting. I did want to mention though, I forgot to ask when it was public comment initially, if we had gotten anything Patty by email? No, okay, just wanted to close the loop on that as well. So, um, thank you all very much for weighing in, um, and thank you to our administrative liaison, to Mr. Dukovich and our solicitor, Mr. D'Azio, and I will turn it over to the curriculum committee to conduct the next committee meeting.
Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 10th Radnor Township School District Curriculum Committee meeting. And I need to, um, extend introductions and welcome to our newly configured curriculum committee. So, um, we have, uh, Dr. Babson returning as our vice chair, um, Sarah Dunn returning as a committee member, um, with an excused absence, I believe.
Yeah.
And we welcome Amy Goldman to our committee. And we have, uh, Mr. Beckhold as our administrative representative. Um, and we have a committee of the whole tonight, so we will be welcoming our new board members to, uh, join in with our curriculum committee tonight. So usually we start with, um, administrative remarks. I don't see that on the agenda, but do you have any administrative remarks for us tonight?
I do, thank you. Uh, good evening everyone and welcome. Uh, tonight we have a number of board action items to move forward for the business meeting, uh, an overnight trip, some new student clubs for the high school and for the middle school, uh, as well as the grant awards from the Radnor Educat- uh, Educational Foundation Fall Grant Cycle. We'll also hear from, uh, Principal Kevgus and Assistant Principal Booterball from the high school regarding the high school program of studies. I want to ask the committee to move this to the full board for approval at the December business meeting. Afterwards, Dr. Kent, Chair of the Calendar Committee, will present drafts of our 2020, 2021 calendar for board discussion. Next month, uh, we will hear from the middle school administration about the middle school program of studies and also hear about the work that's been done regarding placement criteria for students who will be attending Radnor Middle School next year. Uh, for members of the public, I would remind them that we are soliciting parent volunteers for our homework committee and for our athletes and PE committee, uh, those interested in serving, uh, and providing feedback and check out the Radnor Reader if they would like to volunteer for either committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to the approval of the minutes from our November meeting. So that, I guess rests with you Andrew.
Sarah and I had a long chat about it.
No, we're, we're fine, they look good, thanks.
Okay. So the, um, meeting minutes are fine as written and we have a list of board action items for our business meeting next week, which includes some of our, I guess, all of the things that Mr. Beckhold referenced. So that would be the overnight trip, the new student clubs at the middle school and the high school, and then a whole list of grants, uh, probably like almost 20, um, grants from the Radnor Education Foundation. So are there any questions from, I guess we'll start with the non-committee members, is that what we're doing? And then roll into the committee members about any of the action items. So would you like to kick us off?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, how about you Liz? Okay. Nancy, any questions regarding any of the donations or the trips?
What about clubs?
Yeah, the clubs.
Okay, um, I just had one quick question. Um, is that on? Um, I saw in the individual forms, um, just wanted to make sure the cost value, um, for some of, you know, based on what the information was on the form, is consistent with, in the proposal?
Well, it's not consistent, that's your question.
The Speak Up, I know is identified with a cost, but on the form, it, it said that it didn't have any financial obligation. So maybe that was just, um, um, a misprint. And then the Triumph Music Honor Society did have some fees and it says that there's no costs on the summary form. So that was just a comment, just, um, that may or may not need to be adjusted if it's accurate.
Thank you. Um, so the middle school clubs, every middle school that, uh, club that gets approved, gets approved up to 40 hours. Um, at 2309, they meet after school, there's not time during the school day for the students to meet with clubs, so the clubs are after school. Um, so that's something we can certainly have reflected on the paperwork, uh, that was submitted. Um, and then the, um, Triumph Honor Society, uh, they are requesting yearly subscriptions for, uh, resources for state events, uh, we can have that updated as well. But there's not a, um, stipend associated with either the theater club or the Triumph Music Honor Society. And the, uh, estimated costs that are reflected, um, on the agenda are items that are salary, um, under those, uh, those clubs typically.
Anything else, Ms. Monahan?
No.
Here, okay, Mr. Jubelier?
No questions.
Okay. Oh.
No questions.
Mr. Stern. You had to say it. Um, Ms. McMenamin, do you have any comments, concerns? Ms. Goldman? Yeah, he didn't, okay. Dr. Babson?
Nope.
Um, I just wanted to mention, in the past, I believe, we got the form for the clubs, you know, how they fill it out with who their, um, advisor's going to be and, like, they actually give, okay, I don't have it attached to mine. Okay, so we have that somewhere in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, uh, the theater club is going to be, uh, sponsored by Mr. Dietzler at the high school. The Triumph Music Honor Society will be sponsored by Ms. Oxyuk at the high school. And then the Speak Up Club at the middle school will be, uh, sponsored by all three guidance counselors.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now lost my agenda, okay. Um, should we move right into? Yeah, the program of studies, but, um, we have agreement to put this forward to the business meeting, committee members, okay? Yes, should we move into the program of studies?
We can certainly do that, thank you. Uh, at this time I'll call up, uh, high school principal, Mrs. Kevgus, and also Assistant Principal, Ms. Ryan Booterball.
Yeah, what's changed, I wonder?
So you will note that, uh, the board each received a yellow, uh, program of studies. I will note the one change that was a, uh, minor change on the, um, first page of here, it is for the Academic Success Center Plus, Executive Functioning Strategies, which is in red. Um, the course had a slight modification to the wording of it and it added teacher recommended, recommendation required. When we went through, uh, and we looked at this, we, uh, made this fall in line with the rest of the courses for this, uh, for the program of studies. It was not, um, formatted the same as the other courses. So that is the change that, that is reflected in this, uh, this packet from what you received.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Booterball, excuse me, for the beginning of the program and then I will, uh, jump in.
Good evening and, uh, just want to echo Dr. Stevens' remarks about congratulations in your position and the three alignment and the committees look forward to, we look forward to working with you in the upcoming year. So for the annual program of studies presentation, um, there should be two documents in front of you. The one we'll focus on this evening is the cover page that really just captures and summarizes the changes from the prior academic year. So, you know, we're talking 2020, 2021 and it sounds weird to even say that, 2021, but, uh, we're here, it's coming. So to start with the program of studies, to explain the process at the building level is that we lean on the department chairs quite a bit. So to start off the year, um, we sent the program of studies to each of the department chairs that oversee a specific subject. And one of the things we really wanted to do this year is to try to, audit's a strong word, but just review and maybe clean up some of the courses that we offer, in particular ones that may not have run for a couple of years. Uh, you know, things change, times change, uh, new courses are introduced. So, you know, the first part, if you're looking at the removal of courses, there's nine listed there and it may seem like a, a high number, so we're just going to go through the nine and just give you a quick, you know, summary of why, uh, they changed or why they, in this case, were eliminated. So to start off, uh, the percussion H, which when you see the H letter, just as in an honors course, um, that actually is still running, but it's run as a sectional course, so those students that are already in the music program still have access to it, it just offered within the sectional program. Our second course, also with music, is a survey Western music. Uh, that was a new course about three years ago and unfortunately, in the last three years, we haven't had enough student interest to run the course. So we, we presented a couple of years ago and just didn't generate enough interest and that's why it's being taken out of the current program of studies for the 2021 school year. Third up on the list is a swimming selective and, um, again, we offer two swimming courses right now, beginning swimming and advanced swimming. So this one, we haven't had any students or enough students interested in five years. So just given the numbers, we still offer two swing programs with the beginning and advanced swimming. So again, after five years, we decided to eliminate it. And again, these conversations that happen with the department chairs, just talking about what they're offering and there's only so many students to choose from as well with some of the, um, electives. Moving down to our next two or three in a row, the digital photography, communication technology and webpage design. So with the first, digital photography, as we all know, with smartphones and technology, digital photography is really dominating what we do. So the current photography course just kind of morphed and merged the digital photography elective into their actual course. So the students do spend a considerable amount of time working with digital photographs, photography and the photography course. So again, some of these ones like percussion, for instance, students are still accessing them, it just, in a different capacity, it's not a single elective in which they're signing up for. Moving on to our communications technology, uh, we just haven't had the interest, um, to run the course in a couple of years and talking to our, our department chair, we decided to not run it for the next school year. And finally, the webpage design, one of the things we're finding with the students that have grown up with technology is they're making webpages in classes, you know, whether it's a history class or, you know, English class or electives. I mean, this is something the kids are doing, not just in a specific class. And they also are introduced to webpage design in the middle school in sixth or seventh grade. So this is something that they already got once with their district and again, different courses may have webpages part of their assignment, uh, within a particular class. So again, lack of interest and just the exposure to it previously in the middle school, we decided, working with the department chair, not to offer it again for the 2021 school year. And around the top nine, seven, eight, nine are the Keystone courses. So, um, in the past year, we've had a change in the state where previously you had to pass all three Keystone tests. Moving forward, there's a couple of different, we'll call it five different pathways in which students can graduate without passing each of those Keystone exams. So previously, if a student didn't earn a proficient score, they were required to take a remediation Keystone course. Uh, now that the requirements to graduate have changed, we no longer, um, require or offer those three courses. And Mrs. Kevgus, did you want to talk about the Keystone pathways at this point or?
Um, I'll talk about that a little bit later, but just to reinforce the idea that those Keystone courses were no longer required to offer any sort of remediation, so we've taken those out and I'll talk a little bit about pathways in a little while.
So that wraps up the, uh, changes as far as removal of courses for the 2021 school year. If we move on to our next section, the addition of new courses, and we only have one for the next school year, and it's called the Academic Success Center Plus, Executive Functioning Strategies. And Mr. Beckhold talked about this briefly. And so, um, if you had students come through the high school, you may recognize the name, sometimes it's simply referred to as an ASC. So, um, currently, you know, if you're thinking about high school, if you're a freshman, most, uh, most students, almost all freshmen have a study hall, which isn't, you know, it's, it's more of an independent time and you don't have a teacher that's really talking with the students, organizing their work or managing, helping to manage their projects. So some students do well in that environment, actually having 41 minutes to work on upcoming assignments. We found out that some other students need more structure and so we have a course, it's called Academic Success Center. So typically it's a small group class, usually 12 or less, and the teacher works with those students on things that may not come easy to some folks, like chunking assignment, uh, managing projects, uh, checking school log to make sure their assignments and homework, looking at the next week coming up. So it's really organizational type of, uh, focus for academic success centers. That's still running next year, pretty much as it was this year. And the change comes from this new, um, piece of it called the executive functioning strategy. So we hear a lot of parent feedback just suggesting that they need more help with organizing, uh, more help with learning how to be successful in school. So we, uh, went out and investigated different programs and the curriculum we decided to go with is called the Smarts Curriculum. And so if you look at the, um, the summary here of the course, it gives you some of the key points in which this course specifically focuses on. Things like goal setting, cognitive flexibility, organization and prioritizing, accessing working memory and self-monitoring. So again, if you had to differentiate the two, the ASC, which we currently run, and the new ASC plus, again, you're receiving more of that direct instruction from the teacher. And so, you know, this would typically happen twice a week and the program has 30, uh, set lesson plans. And so some students, um, would need a teacher recommendation to go in this particular class, so they most likely would have an ASC already and they could have both simultaneously. So it might be one of those situations where two days a week, they just have an ASC, where the other two days of the week, they're getting this direct instruction about executive function and strategies. So again, it's a bit of a departure, uh, from how we formerly did it, but we think it's going to provide the skills and the direct instruction for students that could really benefit from these, uh, this curriculum for the Smarts program.
I just wanted to add to that, that, you know, ASC, Academic Success Center is a course that's open to all students, that, the one that we have had in place for years now for both for regular education and for special education students. Academic Success Center with, you know, executive functioning strategies will have direct instruction and so there is a teacher recommendation required for that. So the student would have to have, you know, a documented disability that required, um, not remediation rather, instruction with executive functioning. And so, you know, like Mr. Booterball was saying, the model would be, the course would meet on cycle days twice a week, and on those cycle days, they would receive about 20 to 25 minutes of a direct instruction concerning that particular topic. And then they would be allowed to have time at the end to, you know, explore the strategies that were put in place. The beauty of it is, they can have both types of ASC if they need it. So knowing that these courses operate on cycle days, they could have a regular ASC if they needed that structured time, right, in a smaller setting. And then they could have ASC with executive functioning strategies opposite that, so that they were getting the direct instruction as well.
The executive, the ASC course we have now does touch on executive function and does give direct instruction in executive function for the students. This is just what is divergent here, is it more specific to a curriculum to address identified, you know, disabilities or areas where we need to focus? Does that make sense?
Yes, correct. And moving on to the next section of the course, the program overview, we just call it the revisions to current course offerings. So we have a handful of revisions to what we're currently offering, and I'll just go in order with the revisions for the upcoming school year. In order, the first one is Integrated Senior Seminar. And so again, when it's an integrated senior seminar, you have two teachers in the room, one's an English teacher, one's a history teacher. And if you looked at the program of studies, the language for both of them was slightly different. So you really just condensed and eliminated one of the pieces. And on the second page, it basically, we took, we took out the part that you had to take an interdisciplinary diagnostics exam. So that's no longer a requirement or prerequisite to take the Integrated Senior Seminar. So usually, what is the prerequisite now is just teacher recommendation or a gifted identification. So if you look at the program of studies, the language is the same in both the history section and in the, in the English section as well. So just removing that prerequisite was the change and revision for Integrated Senior Seminar. Next up on the list is Fitness for Athletes. And so in the middle of the page, page one, that is, it has red as a ninth grade. So that in the past, only sophomores, juniors, and seniors were eligible for this particular course. Now freshmen are included in the Fitness for Athletes. Mr. Bechtold, do you want to elaborate?
So this course for this year will be by teacher recommendation only. The goal is, as we went through the sleep study, to try to make sure that we had athletes in identified sports that had early dismissals, that we targeted those early dismissals to make sure that they missed as the least amount of core instruction time as possible. So one of the things, when you go through something for the first time, you realize new things. And so one of the things that we realized this year is we had a group of very savvy students at the high school. It was a small group of about maybe 30 students or so that said, ah, if I sign up for Fitness for Athletes, I know it's going to be eighth period. Every other day, I'll have a free period. And so one of the ways that we're able to go and ensure that only the students that need the course or are scheduling the course is by changing this to teacher recommendation only, and so that was also a change that was made.
Moving to our third revision, it falls under the 912 math program. And the word program, I guess, is the key language here, is that we are now going to use the curriculum from Read 180 and Math 180 in our ELA and math program. So with Math 180, a few pieces that we didn't have before is the online learning component. So the model really looks at the whole group instruction, small group instruction, and then students get on the computer, do scaffolding, and additional work. So that brings the technology piece into our current math program, 9 to 12. So again, that Math 180, Read 180 is something that the students would have had in ELA at the middle school or at the high school. So again, it's the curriculum we chose for the Math 912 course. And primarily getting ready for algebra, learning pre-algebra skills in the 912 math course. Our final two revisions this year come in the music department. And the first is name change primarily. It was formerly called American Musical Theater, and this year, the new name is just Music Theater Performance. And the key there would be, Mr. Dietzer is going to primarily focus on the vocal component of the course, which really was a driving force between the, for the name change moving forward. And our last course change or revision was just honors acting. It was formerly called Advanced Acting H. So we thought that was a bit confusing because we have different levels at the high school. And so, you know, it's an honors level course, but it's called advanced. So just, you know, semantics, I guess, just to keep it, you know, call it what it is. And it's honors acting moving forward. So again, that's the program of studies overview, just looking at the courses that we're not offering and running for the upcoming school year, addition of one new course, and a handful of course revisions for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Booterball. I will ask you to open up the program of studies, if you wouldn't mind, to page 10 first. There's really just two things that I wanted to point out. On page 10, we have some information. I made a presentation in November about the changes to the law in Act 158, the fact that students are still required to take the Keystone exams once. However, there are different options for them now. It's no longer a requirement for them to pass, and this is only applicable to the class of 2022 and below. So that's our current sophomores. Requirements of Act 158 outline different pathways that students have, different opportunities. So all of those pathways are listed below. Again, you know, the easiest pathway, and I'm not going to go into detail, but the easiest pathway for students is to obviously pass all three Keystone exams. We are still encouraging students to take it a second time because there is the composite score option. Passing a Keystone exam is a 1,500, and composite score is 4,452. So it's very possible for them to, you know, come close to passing two different Keystone's, pass one of them, and still maintain that composite score. So even if they can pull up their score just slightly by taking it that second time and avoiding some other pathway, we are encouraging them to take a look at that. The other pathways, again, are listed below. So we put that in there so that parents and students have that information moving forward. We are working together, Mr. Booterball and myself, to get a system in place so that we can identify the needs of our students and make sure that every single one of them is taken care of, you know, to show who's passed the biology Keystone, who's passed the algebra Keystone, who's passed the literature Keystone, and in turn, we'll work with our counselors to make sure that if we need to explore pathways for those students, we will do so. The other change, or, well, yes, it is a change, the other change to the program of studies is on page 25. If you look at the top of that page, you'll see it talks about our technical school options, and we have morning session only highlighted. With the new schedule in place, we took a look at all of our students who are, you know, at DCIU or other VOTEC programs at this moment. We have currently 18 students in med careers, which is an honors program. Aside from med careers, we have 13 students in our morning session, and we have four students total in our PM session. Moving forward and looking at those students and, you know, kind of hand-scheduling them out over the next couple of years to make sure that they meet their graduation requirements, it really wasn't possible for them to take afternoon VOTEC. So moving forward next year, those few students, and again, one is graduating, so we're talking about three students in total, would be moving to a morning program. The programs that they are involved in currently are offered in the morning. We've already looked into that to make sure that they can keep the coursework that they've already started. So we just wanted to bring that to students' attention, that moving forward, they would have to be taking part in the morning program. Just one more thing about that, the nice thing about the new schedule is that previously, when they had taken part in the morning program, they would come back later in the day. Now they're only missing the first two periods as opposed to the first three or four periods of the day. So it gives them a little bit more time and flexibility in the schedule to explore different options as well. That's really it for us. Thank you.
Thank you. So actually, a lot fewer revisions, right, than usual? Which is probably because you've been doing this now for a few years for us. So I'm going to turn it over, I guess, to noncommittee board members, if you have any questions.
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Duffy? Okay, Ms. Monahan? Mr., all right, I'm not even going to say it. Mrs. McMenamin? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.?
The book looks great, the program of studies. I've seen this evolve over the years. I just, is the school counseling department on page 46, is that a relatively new addition?
Yes, we just added it last year.
So here's my feedback. I would put that closer to the beginning of the, of the book, where like the special programs and the grades and the, if I'm, particularly if I were looking at this online, if I'm starting to scroll through with my student, that is really helpful information that if it comes before the start of the description of the courses. Because it's really informative. I mean, it's really, it's very good, it's a really good addition to the book. My suggestion would be to put it closer to the front.
I moved it only because it was not alphabetical.
Well, right, but I think of it, I, no, I appreciate that. No, T T, but I, I think of it more as that baseline foundational information that's at the front of the book. So that's my only feedback.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Goldman?
Along the lines of what Susan said, I kind of think that Delaware County Technical Education, Technical School information also might be something to consider putting up front because it falls along with special programs and scheduling opportunities. So that might be something to, especially, I think, it, the case could be made that raising awareness of that programming is important, and so putting it further in the front of the book might be helpful. I have some overarching sort of thematic questions and then some more specific ones. And maybe it's just a function of being new to the committee, but I want to ask this of you. Are you noticing, as you do this from year to year, any specific, any trends in terms of your programming that jump out at you?
I think it's been pretty consistent in terms of what electives the students like. You know, a lot of time, it's word of mouth, oh, I took it as a junior, you should really try this. And so they kind of encourage each other, or the teachers, you know, will kind of talk up their own courses. I think over the past maybe four or five years, there's been a little bit more interest in technology courses, although that's something that's been always a great program at the high school, or project lead the way courses have always been highly coveted.
Okay. That's interesting, and this is probably a little bit of a perilous question to ask, but is there anything that you're, you have a burning desire to offer that you haven't been able to implement yet, per se? I mean, just can't help but be curious about that.
Oh, my goodness. It did not go, it did not have an audience.
I don't want to put you on the spot about it either, but obviously, the follow-up question to, is there, is there anything that you'd say, oh, if only we could offer this, someday we'd like to do that, I'm just curious.
And I may just jump in there because one of the things that Mr. Bechtold and Mr. Dukovich and Dr. Kearney are doing is they're going around to the buildings, and one of our goals this year was to look at our curriculum cycle, our curriculum process. And really, that is the conversation we want to have within that curriculum cycle. So when we're looking at whether it's math, it's history, social studies, it's language arts and English, we want to have those questions over that period of time when we study about what are those things that, you know, we're doing that we're doing well? What are those things that we see happening going across the nation? What do we believe as a district are areas where we've wanted to maybe put in programming? And so, yes, those are really good questions to have that I think we should continue to have through that curriculum cycle process. And as we go about this year, looking to make some improvements to make sure that we're getting that feedback to find out from not only our teachers, but our administration and our community, what are those areas we should be looking at?
I would just kind of piggyback on what Mr. Bachelor said, that I think it's important to kind of solicit that feedback from the faculty, but I think also from our students to see what they would like to see, right? What is it that we don't have currently that we could put in place for them?
Right, so I guess that means that that'll be going on through the curriculum, the new and improved curriculum review cycle process. Okay, so, and when you, you mentioned that the trend is technology, that actually segues into another kind of more global question I have, which is the DCIU and the Delaware County Technical School enrollment. I'm interested to know if you see, consistent with an increased interest in technology movement in that direction, with students and families considering technical school enrollment?
Within the programs themselves at DCIU? I think we have a pretty good-
Just in general going, you know, how, what have the enrollment trends been like there? And is that something that you think can help address? Because looking at the course listings, I guess one could say they're sort of technology, they're trade, but also technology oriented, so.
They've expanded their programs a lot in terms of technology over the past five, six years. I think our students as a whole are really spread out amongst all of the programs, from what I've seen.
So if I could just jump in, one of the things that we've worked to do is to try to get to students earlier because the current Delaware County Technical Schools are not the ones that, when we went to school. And so I was just talking with the elementary guidance counselors as part of the 339 plan, and one of the things that we do is we bring DCTS down to speak to the fifth graders. So that way, they get a chance to see what they could start to plan for. So really, looking at the college and career readiness, a piece of that is making sure that we start to plant the seed early, that these are these opportunities, so that way, it's not, you're a freshman and you're hearing about it for the first time.
Right, and along those lines, I mean, I went to the ribbon cutting of the new Aston campus, and I was blown away. Not that I have that much experience with technical school, but I have to say, and this might be a bit ambitious, but if we can get families and kids to see what that school looks like, it's unbelievable. I mean, their offerings, the facilities are state of the art, so that, you know, I just wanted to mention that as well. More specifically, the revision, some of the revisions to the courses are the removal, for example, of a couple of the art courses. I was heartened to see that there's still a commercial art course in the art curriculum because otherwise, everything else is fine arts. But I think that there is room for commercial art program, programming. So it looks like, even if digital photography and webpage design is going away, is it correct that commercial art sort of is a catch-all for kids who want to do things that aren't specifically fine arts, painting, drawing, ceramics and such?
Is that on? Okay. We have electives that actually cycle back and forth between the two years. And so commercial arts certainly catches a lot of them, but there are other offerings that aren't being offered this year specifically that would be offered next year.
Right, okay. I had a question about the executive functioning. In the past, and I looked and I saw in the, in the, what section of it where it's learning skills?
Skill course.
Skill courses. There used to be a study skills course, specifically study skills. I didn't see it in there, is that, has that been eliminated?
It's not been eliminated, it's been absorbed into ASC because we are addressing those study skills specifically in that course.
Okay, because, and how the executive functioning activities are conducted. One of the things that I heard anecdotally about study skills is, as wonderful as the delivery of those and the instruction of those skills was, they didn't always work on, they weren't always tied into exact work that a student is doing in a current course. So in ASC, will that be something that as these skills are delivered and instructed, that they will actually be using real-life assignments so that they can practice these skills in real time on things that the students are actually working on?
That's really the goal of both. Because they, that's, when they go to ASC, they have particular assignments that they would be addressing with that teacher in the class. And so especially in the ASC, you know, with executive functioning strategies, they would have that direct instruction, and then they would apply it to, you know, whatever assignments they have at that moment. So yes, in real time.
Okay. In the health curriculum, quick question. Obviously, my eye went straight to sleep health. I didn't see it explicitly in any of the descriptions where health is offered in ninth and 10th grade. So I don't know of that, if we're not offering sleep health, but given our initiative, I know that we're trying to, through a variety of ways, address sleep health and embed that in our curriculum. And yet, when I didn't see it in the ninth and 10th grade health curriculum, I was wondering if that is by design because it's embedded elsewhere, or it's, you're doing it, but it just wasn't mentioned in the description?
It's not an entire unit, but it is addressed.
Okay. Just first, it might be something worth putting in there just because we are a leader in that front at this point. Quick science question, and that is that I know that last year, or going into the 18, 19- Quick science question, and that is that I know that last year, or going into the eighteen, nineteen school year, you changed the college prep science course to be Science in the Environment as a way to better prepare those students for the Biology Keystone. It's now, I guess, you're heading into the...
The first year.
This is the first year, so...
First year they'll be taking Biology CP as sophomores. And so they would take the Keystone this May.
Okay. So you don't have any date on whether or not that was an effective change yet? It's hard to keep track between when you report that you're gonna do this and what year it actually starts or whatever. So I'm, I'm a year ahead of myself, but okay.
I'm anxious to see as well.
Okay. All right, good. And I think I had just one more question, actually a suggestion. In the table of contents, it was hard for me as I was looking to find electives versus core courses. And I don't know if it's even possible structurally. But to be able to more easily differentiate which courses qualify for core as opposed to elective. I see sometimes it's delineated in a specific subject section, but I didn't know if it, there was a way to more easily illuminate what is a core course versus what is an elective. I was having trouble trying to decipher that. But I'm not a high school student or a high school parent at the moment, so maybe they know it more reflexively than I do. But I just was wondering if that was something that you had given thought to.
So if you look under the school counseling portion?
What page is that real, for quickly?
It starts on page forty-six, but I'm looking specifically at...
All right, that's the one for the moment. That's at forty-six, it might be moving forward.
Forty-eight, actually, was the one that I wanted to bring to your attention.
It's the chart. I thought that was helpful.
Yes. So that was kind of the idea behind that chart on page forty-eight, to identify what the requirements are for each department in terms of total number of credits. And then to give the students examples of what that would look like, freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, senior year even. But we can certainly, you know, I look at it differently.
That's great. Yeah, no, I, I thought that was a very helpful chart, but I, again, I was within like English. It was hard to tell which English courses, for example, were core courses and which ones qualified for electives, that kind of thing. That was the kind of thing that was just a little confusing to me. Other than that, I thought it was, you know, it's great. So thank you very much for answering my questions.
All right. Dr. Babson, do you have questions, comments, suggestions?
Well, we had a great conversation last week. Thank you for that. Where I learned a lot and, and learning about, sort of like what Amy was saying, the trends, what's interesting, looking ahead. Yeah, I mentioned some things that were kind of interesting to me personally. But, you know, that also has to be weighed with, with these overarching trends and also student interest. And there are also, I mean, I could, I could hit some bullet points of the conversation. But one thing that was interesting for me is that my father was an administrator at a community college in Columbus, Ohio. And when he first joined there in the mid-eighties, it was called Columbus Technical Institute. So in other words, it was more of like an institution that included the kinds of offerings talked about earlier that, that you mentioned, more geared toward the vocab track. And it's just interesting to see the, the options that are available just right here in Delaware County, you know, between DCC and, and those options. So it's also heartening to hear that early on, kids are being made aware of what the options are. Not like, you know, you're asking what a kid's five-year plan is when they're ten. But at the same time, it's good to, to get kids thinking about where they might be going and what, what their interest might be. But one interest that I did express that I thought was encouraging is that, I mean, there are offerings like sociology, there are offerings like global issues. I think those types of courses can be very relevant going forward. Technology, of course. But it's just all very encouraging to see the breadth and depth of the offerings here in the Program of Studies. So those are just some general comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things, just to loop back to things where in the past we've had questions. So we used to offer some AP courses that would alternate years, like some of the other electives. Are we still doing that with some of the AP courses? Are we offering those every year and we're seeing which ones students sign up for and then running those? How, how are we deciding? You know what I mean? We used to offer like AP European and then we'd offer it every other year. And I think we did the...
Don't, I don't recall that, in my time at least.
There were some AP languages that, that for, there was a while that like AP German ran once every other year kind of thing. There were, but maybe you have higher subscription now?
Yeah, I, so...
We have a very high subscription to the APs, yes. So we haven't, we haven't been, you know, alternating. Even with, you know, Mr. Bechtold just brought up B music theory, but that was one that did use to alternate, but we've run that consistently for three years now because there has been so much interest for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're offering them all and they're actually all running? So the only ones that are alternating are some of the art, elective?
Our courses will alternate. And that's really...
Really, and that's it at this point? Okay. So thank you for clearing that up.
Actually, Mr. Buderball was just bringing up multi-variable and linear. And those were two that used to alternate as well.
That used to alternate too, right.
But we have had such a large population for both of those courses that they are running every year now as well.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wait, so we're, and we used to send like our tippity-top kids off to Villanova to take something? We don't have to do that anymore?
We don't send students to Villanova.
No, they had to go on their own. But we're not doing that, right? We've got it covered now.
Got it covered.
Yeah. All right, awesome. We also had a question in the past about foreign language. Like, I know we're doubling up one A and two A, but we used to, at some points, have to double up like four and five honors or something like that. It's not in the Program of Studies that we're doing that. Would we only do that if it's, if there's an enrollment issue that would lead to that? We did it in German a couple of years ago.
So on page seventy-three, it states that, I'll see if I can pull this up here quickly.
Yeah. It's there in bold.
Yeah, so it, it states on page seventy-three that parents and students should be aware that language courses or levels may need to be combined or canceled due to lack of enrollment. So one of the things that we've always worked to do for students that commit, because really they commit in middle school to a course, is if we need to because of attrition, and you don't have, typically have growth in upper-level language courses. You usually have a, you know, a certain percentage of students that drop off after every, every year. So what we'll end up doing is we'll end up combining. The goal is to make sure that you have a student that gets the class that they need. So that way if they, if we have to put a four and five together, the teachers have differentiated and we've got experience doing that. And so this is just letting them know. You will not see it necessarily reflected in the course sequences, but that does happen.
Okay. Did, did that happen this year? Do we know?
Well, we're running French one into A, German one and two.
Yes, but did we have to combine like German four and five again or German four and eight?
Advanced has been combined for a number of years now.
Okay. So German is still...
But outside of what? No.
The other languages are not. They're all running both the honors and the advanced.
Again, it really, it really depends on the section numbers. So it depends on how many students initially selected at the middle school, how many of them come up and how many drop out. So we have the flexibility, which is nice, to either run it as a standalone or to combine it to ensure that students aren't forced out of a language that they had selected and go into something new when they're a junior or senior.
Okay. I just know there'd been discussion of that in the past. So right now, this, I know, and it's under audit this year, right? Foreign language or world language. So if there are any still bumps in that process, I guess it will come out, so, right?
Yes, we have world language, science and tech ed that are under audit this year. And so that's something we'll certainly look at as we go through the world language audit.
Okay. And then I have a question about the Fitness for Athletes. Just, can you just tell me again how, how it works? So when you're in season with your sport, that's when you can be excused from the class? But the rest of the year, you're required to go to your regular gym class? Or can you just explain again?
So again, you know, this year, we identified certain sports to be included in Fitness for Athletes. And those students that were in those identified sports were placed in the course, with the exception of the thirty kids that Mr. Bechtold talked about. If there was a competition, right? The idea was we wanted to mitigate the loss of instruction. So if there was a competition and there was an early dismissal, then they would miss class that day. Again, not missing a core class, but rather missing their PE class to attend the competition. Outside of that, right? They would be expected to be in class.
So it runs just like a regular PE class the whole rest of the year? Okay.
And again, it addresses needs of athletes. Right? So they look at different things. One day they might do yoga and Pilates. One day they might look at nutrition and, and trying to create, you know, a diet that's appropriate for an athlete. So they do all different types of, of activities.
Okay. And I know we talked about this, if other high schools follow our great example and alter their start time, it could impact this course, correct? Or would it still run it the same way? We just probably wouldn't have as many early dismissals?
We would continue to run it. So we would continue to run it to make sure that if we would have an early dismissal, that that would happen. I don't anticipate, even if all of Delaware County went and changed, there's gonna be some schools that, they're not necessarily gonna go to eight-thirty. Some might go to, you know, they're all over the place between, anywhere between seven-fifty-five and, and eight-thirty or eight-forty-five. It really could run the gamut. And some schools decide not to, to keep their, their time status quo and to pull their kids from core classes. So really, finding consistency among school districts or high schools in the state of Pennsylvania is a challenge. So I think that we would continue to, to keep this course as it is. One of the things I will say is we are, we, you know, as I opened with, we are looking for parent volunteers. So one of the things that the, the district is looking at this year is we're gonna be looking at athletes and the physical education requirement. So we're gonna be looking what other schools do, looking at what we do, what's the state requirement, and, and really making sure that we, that we take a deep look at, at our PE program specifically for our athletes.
Okay. All right. And maybe I missed it. Do we have any mention in here about dual enrollment with the community college?
Yes.
I missed it. Is it with Career and Technical Education? Or is it a different, in a different place? It's in the front?
Yes, in the beginning.
Okay. No, with the Delaware County Community College? Is it after that dual enrollment?
Talking about the Pitt dual enrollment program?
No, I'm talking about if we have students who want to dual enroll with the Delaware County Community College. They can take courses under the Delaware, the community college's dual enrollment program? We're not doing that. Yeah, we got University of Pittsburgh, I saw that one.
Right.
We're not set up for dual enrollment with DCC?
We're not.
I thought you were talking about Pitt.
No, I'm talking about the community college. Okay. So, yeah, maybe a conversation for another day. Because that's a program that other high schools in the county are taking advantage of.
So that's something that we did explore two or three times with the high school. And, and ultimately, you know, after looking into it and having conversations with DCC, one of the things that we did is we struck this partnership with the University of Pittsburgh. That's something that we're gonna be reexamining this year. And, but, yes, we initially did have conversations with them a couple of different times. But then we ended up a couple of years ago, actually, working out an agreement with, with Pitt.
Okay. So this better meets our needs as well, you're saying?
Yes. Pitt has a program called CHS, College and High School. And it has a really robust program in terms of offerings. So we could look to, and again, we explored it a little bit last year, we'll be continuing those discussions this year. But, you know, they have offerings in social studies and English and, and art and pretty much every topic that we could look at. And, you know, for the price or the, the fee that they charge, the tuition is pretty nominal for what you're getting at the end of the day. And it offers us a lot more possibilities than what we have with DCIU.
And anecdotally, one of the things that's challenging about DCC, because I looked into this, is it's a solid twenty-five-minute commute down there. It's just, it's a tough place to get to from here quickly. You know, whereas the Pitt thing was...
Yeah, I mean...
It's a great program, but it's tough if you're trying to go back and forth.
Right. No, it would be for, it would be for a student who wanted to take it at night or something at DCC, I would think, because of the commute issue. But we'll see with their new campus, who knows? Anyway, a conversation for another day on that. Anybody else with the Program of Studies? I think we've been through. Should we move on to? Well, first, I, I want to thank you again for putting this together. I think it's amazing. Every time I see this, I want to go back to high school just for this Program of Studies, not for anything else. All right, should we move on to the... Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna make a suggestion. Suggestion, sorry, we're sharing a mic. And if it's okay with the curriculum committee, and I apologize to administrators who came to talk about the calendar tonight. But just looking at our schedule tonight, and I know we had some finance items, if maybe we could talk about the calendar next week and embed that as part of the board meeting next week, if that would work with everyone. Traditionally, we've looked at our school calendar in the January, February. We want to start to back that up and we want to start to have conversations even about, you know, maybe we want to plan a two-year calendar, different ideas like that. So the point tonight was just to share the status of where the calendar committee is. Board members received two copies. I think we could have the discussion we're gonna have tonight, we could have next week. We're not looking for a vote. So that's why I think it's easy to push to next week. If that's acceptable, we could push it to next week and have that conversation in the board meeting since we weren't looking for a December approval of the calendar to begin with. Would that make sense with everyone if we move that to next week?
Yeah. Yeah, I did have one question about the calendar. So I wanted to just know what happened seven years ago when we had the same really late Labor Day and the Christmas holidays falling on the same time. So just, not for tonight, but just to have that for the discussion next week. Thank you. All right. So are we, is, are we ending up?
I'm gonna roll into finance.
We're rolling? Okay. That's it for...
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get underway with the finance committee agenda. First, I'd like to start off by welcoming Nancy Monahan and Bradley Moore to the finance committee. Sarah Dunn is going to be the vice chair. She will be here a little later tonight. She's not able to be here right now. And with that, we'll start off with the approval of the November twelfth Finance Committee meeting minutes. I think you attended the meeting. You know, I don't know if you saw anything that, that was of concern, but we'll look to put, we'll approve those minutes from the November twelfth Finance Committee meeting. Is that good? Great. And then we're gonna get right underway with the draft twenty eighteen, nineteen audit report. We have, the administration will be looking, requesting that we bring the draft to the full board meeting next week for approval. So with us tonight, we have Carl Hogan from BBD. He is our auditor. Welcome to, yep, come on down. And Mrs. Michelle Deco, our business administrator. If, if you open up your packets and we'll get right underway. Welcome. So we're doing a little different tonight, Carl. We're having committee of the whole, doing a bunch of committee meetings. So we may get, we may, you may field some questions from everybody, but we'll see. All righty?
That's fine with me?
Great.
So I'm gonna be as brief as possible to fit it into your timeline. I know you have some other discussion points tonight, but so you're gonna...
There's, there's no surprises here. All the numbers that were being presented to you, I know Michelle's been keeping you up to date and Penny keeping you up to date on, you know, where you stood for year end. So this is pretty much just putting a bow on the year end and to, you know, put in draft form what we expect to present next week at the board meeting. So that being said, obviously, I want to stop, start on pages one and two, the independent auditors' report. You know, it's, pretty soon it's gonna pour onto the third page. It's getting longer and longer. But basically what it does, it outlines management's responsibilities, our responsibilities, what responsibilities we take for the different information in the audit report. And then ultimately, we give an opinion on your financial statements. And basically, this is a boilerplate report, basically stating that the man, that the numbers presented to us by management for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, were fairly presented. That being said, I'm gonna start with the schedule that I always start with because I think it's the one that is the most relevant related to the board. And that's all the way in the back of the audit report. And that's on page number fifty. And page number fifty is your bear budgetary... And page number fifty is your budgetary comparison report for the general fund. And you would think, why do they put the most important schedule in the back of the audit report? It's because when we're doing our audit, all we're doing is auditing the actual numbers. We don't provide an opinion on the budget numbers. So hence, the budget, it's put in the back of the report and disclosed accordingly in the auditor's report that we just talked about, what responsibility we're taking related to the schedules in the back. But as you could see up at the top, you have a total budget that was adopted for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen of about ninety-seven point three million dollars. Your actual revenues came in at ninety-nine point two million dollars for a positive variance of one point nine million dollars. And you can see, most of the variance is related to your local source revenues. Now, your local source revenues are those ones related, primarily related to your taxes. So your taxes, your delinquent real estate taxes, your realty transfer taxes, your investment earnings. These are a lot of revenues too, that you also want to be conservative when you're budgeting. So if you actually looked at why you had that two point one million dollar variance in local source revenues, you're going to see that those are in those line items related to realty transfer taxes, investment earnings, delinquent real estate taxes, and just your real estate collections in general. And that's pretty much an indicator of the economy and the improving economy. And, you know, like I said, you need to be conservative when you budget these local source revenues because hence, you may have had a good year in two thousand and nineteen related to your investment earnings, but now the rates have gone down a little bit. So hence, when, I'm sure when management was doing their budget for nineteen twenty, they were conservative. I'm trying to, you know, not be too aggressive, not knowing you're going to get those revenues in upcoming years. As you come down below, you have your expenditures. Expenditures were budgeted at ninety-six point eight million dollars. They came in at ninety-six point four million dollars, within, you know, four hundred thousand dollars there. You know, it's not exactly how you budget. If you look at all the different functions on the right-hand side, you are under budget on your regular programs. But on the other hand, you're over budget on your special ed programs, which is not unusual. With all the school districts I work with, I would say a lot of people are over budget on their special programs. It's, it seems to be a hard number to get a handle on these days, just in general. But overall, the positives and the negatives, you know, weighed out to a positive variance in your expenditures of four hundred thousand dollars. Total other financing sources uses. Yep, total expenditures about three, three quarters down the page on the right-hand side. So you have the total expenditures ninety-six point eight and ninety-six point four. So you expended by four hundred thousand dollars for a positive variance. Yep, yep. And then we have your other financing sources uses. Budget amounts were eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The actual total other financing sources uses were one point three million dollars for negative five hundred thousand dollars. And that was due to an additional trans, an unbudgeted transfer that was made by the board over to the capital reserve fund to account for, or to, to, to fund certain capital projects that were, that needed to be done. So at the beginning of the year, you budgeted to use about four hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. You added one point five million dollars of fund balance. So overall, when you take the positive variance of the revenues.
A bunch of us and new people, could you slow down a little bit for that particular part?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
You're speaking fast.
You can go slower, it's okay.
Oh, sorry about that.
Time is of the essence on the one hand, on the other hand, it's such important information. If you can just recite it a little bit more slowly, that would be helpful, thank you.
I just got yelled at the other night, too. There's actually a court reporter was there, it was a thing, and she's like, whoa, you got to slow down. But as you can see, all right, so positive variance, total revenues one point nine million dollars. Positive variance of total expenditures, four hundred thousand dollars. Combined with the negative variance with the other financing sources uses of about the five hundred thousand dollars that equates to that positive one point nine million dollar. Positive variance in relation to what you budgeted at the beginning of the year.
Yep. Sorry?
Yeah, it's hard to.
For a lot of purposes, seeing what we, how we compared to budget is good. When you're talking about the variance, so irrelevant. It just muddies the waters personally, just everybody, you know. How we did compared to how we thought we were going to do, it's not nearly as relevant as how did we do, period. Just keep it in perspective.
You did well.
Yeah, I, yes.
So as you can see, you added one point five million dollars of fund balance. Beginning of the year, you had twenty-one, twenty, twenty point two million dollars of fund balance. You added one point five million, and at the end of the year, you have twenty-one point six million dollars of fund balance. And we're going to talk about the current commitments, and I know there's some discussion tonight regarding, you know, commitments and if any changes are going to be made to this draft financial statement.
Okay, just, may I just get that clarification here? So fund balance at the beginning of the year was twenty-one nine eight four thirty-one.
That's correct.
But the net change is one point nine, so why is the end of the year twenty-one?
No, it's not, that's why I'm saying.
That's why she said, that's, the one point five is the addition.
One point four eight three.
One point four eight three. So the one point nine is, so when you did your budget.
Attention to that.
You budgeted to decrease your fund balance. And then you actually added one point four, so the delta between what you actually added and what you budgeted to add was the one point nine.
Thank you.
That makes, sorry about that. Any other questions, concerns?
Okay, sometimes as we go along in these finance discussions, at least, and I've not been on the finance committee, but watched most of the meetings, sometimes we suggest things as, to help us along with our interpretation of the different documents that we see. And I was just wondering if it would be potentially helpful to highlight, like literally highlight some key things that you are going to highlight in the report. It helps when we go through, especially when we go through this quickly. And I don't know if I'm speaking just for myself or potentially some new members of the board. Would there be a way maybe to literally highlight some of the key numbers? Andrew was nodding over there, Liz is nodding for sure over there. Just to help draw our attention to some of the things that you're going to be going over. Because without that, and with the pace that we go through this, it's sometimes hard to keep up as evidenced by my few interruptions that I am apologizing for. So just.
Yeah, so I, we, just for context, Carl, we have four brand-new board members. So, you know, we're going to take it back a step and you went over the beginning, you know, that's kind of the executive summary of the whole report. Then you're going to show us a couple of finance pages, and if we have questions, it's fine to ask them, but let me let you take it from there.
But just in general, when you're looking at this statement, if I was looking at this statement, the items that you have the most control over a lot of times are the expenditures. And if you look at the expenditures in comparison to budget, you know, the four hundred thousand dollars compared to ninety-six point four million dollars, that's good. And then if you look at where you have your biggest variances compared to budget, you're, it's in that line item where you don't have as much control in terms of investment earnings or transfer taxes or, you know, real estate collections in general. So, but then again, like I said, you want to be conservative because those are the line items that you could get burned on in terms of if you are too aggressive in terms of that. So overall, you know, good in terms of, you know, expenditures, you have control over revenues where you don't have as much control. Because as you can see, with the state revenues and the federal source revenues, you know what those dollar amounts are going to be and hence why they're so close compared to budget.
And just want to just echo some of what Amy and Susan just shared. We are, last year during our budget cycle as a board, we discussed the idea of building in some budget trainings. And it's, you know, it's a topic that we've talked about the last couple of years to try to have as much opportunity as a board to look at that, so.
So it's coming.
So it's coming. So we're looking to build in some training, starting in January, February, March, both as part of a new board orientation, which is a piece we have to, you know, that we wanted to do, but also for the entire board as well. And, you know, Michelle will help to lead us through and we can go back and revisit some of these things as well. I don't know if we'll drag you back out or not, Carl, for that.
Not a problem. The next page, I'm going to talk about, I'm just going to stay in the back real quick just to highlight one page that seems to garner a lot of interest when I do talk about it with some of the school boards. And that's on back on page fifty-two. A couple of years ago, you implemented a new accounting standard, et cetera, to capture reporting requirements for pension plans. This schedule is going to turn into a ten-year rolling schedule. It was implemented five years ago. But just to kind of show you, you know, the board and the struggle in terms of your Peers' contributions. So if you look back in two thousand and fourteen and all the way up to two thousand and eighteen, the schedule is always going to be on a one-year lag because Peers' can't put the information out fast enough to, you know, put the, to report it in your audit report because they have the same year end as you. But as you can see, back in two thousand and fourteen, your contractually required contribution for Peers' was six million dollars. And only a short period of time later, in two thousand and eighteen, it's almost doubled to thirteen point one million dollars. And if we rolled this back to five years previous, before this accounting standard was set in place back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, your rate was about four percent. So you could probably even, you know, divide it in two, even more, so two, three million dollars. So kind of give you a perspective, over the last decade, you've had to incorporate in your hundred million dollar budget, almost ten percent additional just to account for that pension. So the good news is it's kind of leveled off. And, you know, you won't have these big increases again, but kind of puts into a visual, you know, what all school districts have had to deal with over the past decade.
I don't know where you're going next, but I want to make sure to touch on one issue, depending on where you go.
The fund balance?
No, it's actually, it's related to the Peers'.
Okay, go ahead.
So remind me of the page, because I know it's in here, the one that says, it kind of adds all those numbers up together and says, we have two hundred and fifty million dollars of OPEB.
Yeah, that's on the previous, on page fifty-one, previous page before.
Okay, so can these pages, is there a way in the book, in the, in the report that they could be? I guess it matters for those of us who are electronic, but the fact that these are all of sudden landscape. This isn't even the page, Carl, I've seen it somewhere else, I think it's on the page.
Is that landscape on your report that you have there?
No, it's not.
No. It's landscape, which on a computer.
It's on the computer, that's how it shows.
It's fine, really, all where I'm going is, there, that's not even the page, because I read it somewhere else. It was the page that says our long-term liability is, every school district looks like they're in the hole because every school district is now required to report the full.
Yeah, it's page fifty-one, it's the hundred and forty-eight million, your proportion of shares is about a hundred and fifty million dollars of the billion-dollar actuarial accrued deficit that Peers' has.
That's, that's not the page, because it was a different page I saw. That's fine, but I just wanted to tell everybody, context. The state now requires school districts to report as part of their liabilities, the full, your full pension obligation. If we stopped, closed the doors today, and we stopped being the Radnor Township School District, we would still have all these hundreds of millions of dollars of pension benefits to pay out. And they now make us show that on the balance sheet as, you know, an expense today. Am I saying that accurately?
I mean, when you're.
Accurately enough.
If I, I mean, as a board, you're mostly concerned about what do I, you know, what, what kind of revenue do we need to generate in the current year to pay our current contribution? But on page fifteen is what I think you're talking about. And they try to incorporate, you know, I'd say about almost twenty years now, they try to incorporate a reporting model within the financial statements to kind of show governments like a business. So it shows your capital assets, it shows, you know, your general obligation debt, your compensated absences. And I think the number that Ms. Stern's referring to is that if you look down below, you have unrestricted, so you have a fund balance of twenty million dollars. But if you were a business, you'd be out of business because you have an unrestricted deficit of a hundred and fifteen, you know, million dollars. So basically, you know, your asset, I mean, your liabilities, including your non-current liabilities, over your assets are, you know. But what you need to be concerned with as a board is, and what do we need to generate on an annual basis to cover what our contractually obligated requirement is.
Right, I'm really more talking about, a little bit above that, the non-current, non-current liabilities of two hundred and forty, fifty-nine million dollars. That represents our full pension obligation.
And the hundred and fifty million is in there, yep.
Yeah, and the hundred and fifty million is in there, but it's, so to look at this, if you looked at this page, you'd say, oh my gosh, we're in horrible shape. But in fact, that's a cumulative liability. And to what Carl's saying, you know, our budgets are based on, what do we need to generate for revenue to pay our share of the existing liability, of the yearly liability? Does that make sense?
So as of July first, two thousand and nineteen, they changed the funding requirement. So it's now more like a defined contribution plan than a defined benefit plan. But by the time the positive effects of that take place, I think we will all be long gone to see. So hopefully, the plan is, you know, I think they're saying maybe twenty years or so, we'll start to see positive effects related to that. The next page I want to go over is on page number nineteen. And do two more pages. Page number nineteen is the information we just presented before for the general fund, without the budget, without the budget information. And then we have your other major funds, which consist of your capital projects fund, your debt sinking fund, and then you have the community swim fund, which is considered a non-major governmental fund. Capital projects fund is another fund that we spend, you know, a fair amount of time in. As you can see, during the current year, you had about one point two million dollars of expenditures, which were being covered by that transfer we talked about before from the general fund. And then there's some activity down below, during the current year, you were able to, you had a bond refunding, you were able to take advantage of some changes in the interest rates during the current year. So that's the ins and the outs of the bond refunding that happened in the current year. At the end of the day, you had four point six million dollars in your capital projects fund. You added seven hundred thousand dollars. So at the end of the year, you have five point three million dollars in your capital projects fund available for future capital projects in accordance with your capital improvement plan. And then you also have a debt sinking fund. Back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, the district took advantage of a program where you had interest-free bonds related to the Recovery Reinvestment Act. And in accordance with the bond indenture, these bond, this bond money is put into a sinking fund until such time those bonds are called in two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-nine. And then at that time, those funds will be used to pay off those bonds at that time. So those funds can't be touched for current debt, or debt service, but it's there just as an accounting function to kind of account for that money. And when those bonds come due, it will pay for that. Any questions? And then I know the one page, I know you're going to have some discussion on it, maybe we could segue into that with this, is page number seventeen. And this is your balance sheet, this is as of a point in time, what your assets were, or your current assets are, your current liabilities are, and the excess of those assets over those liabilities being the fund balance we just spoke about of the twenty-one point six million dollars. So as you can see, the total assets were thirty-four point seven million dollars at June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Total liabilities at year end, twelve point five million dollars. The liabilities at year end are just large, relatively speaking, is because of the accrued salaries and benefits at year end. If you think about it, the teachers work through June thirtieth, but they get paid through August thirty-first. So we accrue those salaries and benefits that they earn through June thirtieth, but paid out after year end. So hence, you know, it's just to capture, you know, what they're being paid for in the year in which they actually provided those services. So the excess of the assets over the liabilities is the twenty-one point six million dollars. And currently, as it sits, the undersigned amount equals exactly eight percent of what's allowed by PDE of your next year's expenditure budget. The long-term portion of your compensated absences and your early retirement plans will tie out directly to those liabilities that are reported in the back of the report. The employer retirement rate stabilization amount is, equals to the investments that you have put aside for those to kind of help stabilize those increases we just talked about before. Then also, you have the curriculum and technology initiatives fund. So this is the balance that's in those two funds that's currently sitting there, it's on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And then in order to get to the eight percent, the remainder was put into the capital projects as a placekeeper. Is that a good way to put it for now, until discussion could be had with the board to determine whether that'd be the most appropriate place to put it?
I do want to point out, you all have a yellow copy of a memo. Mrs. Stern pointed out to me that there was a mistake on the memo that was originally sent to you. So you have the correction there. I had looked at an earlier audit report, draft audit report that had been sent to me. After I sent you the email, Mrs. Stern, I contacted Ken and said, I did figure out where I got that number from. So on October twenty-seventh, I had a draft audit report that showed the fund balance as the one million five twenty-three eight thirty-four. And there was an audit adjustment after that. So the fund balance should have been reported on this memo is one million four eighty-three one oh six. So the fund balance should have been reported on this memo is 1,483,106. And so that just changes the committed to capital projects from the recommendation of an increase of 176,852 to an increase of 136,123. I apologize for that in my haste, I just grabbed the recommendation from November and changed the date at the top, so I apologize, I should have gone back and looked at the draft audit report again.
Actually, Amy picked up on that.
Well, thank you.
All right, so do you have questions? You know, I mean, this is, this is a daunting document to be handed your first committee meeting, the first month that you're on the board, so welcome to Radnor.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
One of the things, I understand that this document has a lot of numbers in it, and it can be very overwhelming. If you are not a numbers person like myself and Mr. Hogan, and you'd like to read about what happened in the district in more layman's terms, you can always read the MDA, the Management Discussion and Analysis, which starts on page three, and that is, is supposed to give you a general overview in layman's terms, more like a Word document that reflects all of the basic changes that occurred. So I'd encourage you to read that over, and you'll get a, a good understanding of the kinds of things that happened during the fiscal year that impacted the audit report.
Yeah, I totally agree, and especially where it pertains to at the top of page nine, and those governmental funds, and what you focus on as a board in terms of a budgeting basis, so I think there's some, I mean, like Michelle says, it puts it in layman's terms, so especially, you know, if you look at page 11, you look at salaries, you know, everybody knows what salaries or what employee benefits are, what supplies are, and it compares what you spent in 2019 compared to 2018. Otherwise, you're looking at the stuff in the other part of the audit report, and it's talking about instruction, student support, services, et cetera, just, you know, until you start to get into it, you don't know what's in there. But definitely, in the Management's Discussion Analysis, it puts it in terms, you know, that people can understand.
And it's got some pretty pictures and charts.
All right, so other questions?
Yeah, I have a really, really basic question. So one of these categories has the constraint on it that it can only be 6 percent or some...
Eight percent.
Eight percent.
Eight percent of the next year's expenditure budget.
Which one is that?
The unassigned.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Michelle puts that, highlights that in the Management's Discussion Analysis, actually. And that's on the top of page four.
Yeah.
Our next year's expenditure budget, it's over the $100 million mark to.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I'm going to ask the noncommittee members first, Liz, do you have any questions? Okay, Andrew? Okay, Jeffrey, Jeff?
More to come. A lot to learn.
Okay, no, that's good, I mean, again, we do realize this is a...
Thank you for the layman's, we're reading that with the pretty charts and learning.
All right, Amy?
I asked you my question.
Oh, yeah, you did ask me your question. Okay, so let's start, Bradley?
This is more for my own benefit clarification and anyone from the public who might be watching. From, to Ms. Stern's comment about the, about the total number of the non-current liabilities, the 250 million or so, that's about 150 million of the pension, and then the other big ticket on there is about 88 million of borrowing that the district has done. I want to make sure I'm understanding that, and I know it's on page 36.
Yep, that is correct, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Bradley, is that your only question? Is that it? I didn't know if you had more.
Yeah, and then, that seems to be a footnote that board members are interested into as well, because if you look on footnote number seven, which outlines the general obligation debt, it tells you what all your outstanding issues are, and what the payments are going to be over the next, you know, 15 years or so.
It's also, also outlined on page 36.
Nancy?
Not at the moment.
Okay, great, Sarah?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Great. All righty, so you should look to see the report next week, it will be on our agenda for formal final, you know, formal approval of the district and the numbers. I, I don't know that you expressly said this, but we had what's called a clean audit.
That's correct.
Yeah, and the other thing is that we act, I actually was called in by the auditors as a board member and chair of finance, and I was interviewed just, you know, to, they, they will, and you may get called over the years, you know, they ask for a board member to just be interviewed, to just talk about, do you have any concerns about the management of the district? My point being that the auditors are very thorough in making sure that things are cleanly run and well-run, and it's a, it's a, it's a good audit, so.
I mean, ultimately, I mean, even though we do most of our work with Penny and Michelle, we technically work for the board, so.
Right.
Even though it gets misconstrued sometimes, stuff like that, so, you know, that's why we reach out to you in some fashion.
No, no, we thank you, and I know it's been a lot, a lot of work this fall, leading up, getting the books to the point that, that we have an audit to be approved is a lot of work for the finance office, so thank you both, Michelle and Penny, and I know the rest of your office, okay? Thank you.
For next week, I just want to let you know, I won't be there next week, somebody else will be there for next week, but he's more, he probably knows more than me, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
We'll be good.
Thank you. So we're going to keep.
We'll let you know for sure if we need to.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do you want, I'm looking to see, oh, no, do you want to do the quick discussion about the, I'm sorry, I blanked, the fund balance allocation, Michelle?
Just wait. The audit report that Carl went over includes the recommendations that are outlined on the yellow memo that you received, the revised. Again, as he mentioned, there's certain things that you really can't reallocate, because there's limits on them, or they are committed for some functions, such as the technology and the curriculum funds. So those are the recommendations, we can certainly have a conversation regarding that. The only place where you have the ability to really make some changes is with that committed to capital projects amount, that $136,000. We could talk about where you want to put it. I do think it gives you the most flexibility by leaving it in the general fund and committing it to capital projects. Many districts will transfer that over to their capital projects fund, which is Fund 32, but once you transfer that over to Fund 32, you can't bring it back. If you leave it in the fund balance in the general fund as, as committed for capital projects, at any moment, by board resolution, you can make a change, and you can decide to use it for some other purpose. So we don't transfer it over to Fund 32, it would not be my recommendation that we do that at this current time, we can do it at any time during the year if we want to do that, or we can map a board resolution and say that we want to use it for a different purpose.
And I just want to, so when we talk about the general fund, they will call that Fund 10, and that's, you know, where all the, the real estate money comes in, the bills go out, everything gets paid out of Fund 10. And then there is, as she said, Fund 32 is the capital funds. Within our general fund, within Fund 10, we can have some buckets, right, Ken? We can have, we can have funds that, that they're committed. We also have another fund that's the cafeteria, Fund 15 and Fund 17, just remind me which one's which.
Fund 15 is a technology fund. It's actually part of the general fund, even though it's in a separate fund, it's run through a separate fund, and then it ends up getting collapsed into the general fund. It's a difficult concept to understand, so we'll talk about that more when we talk about our training. And then we have Fund 17, which is the curriculum fund, that's also part of Fund 10, it gets collapsed, the same like the technology fund.
Right.
We have clearing funds for funds that we hold that don't necessarily belong to us, those are typically student dollars, and PTO funds that are donated to us and things like that. And then we've got.
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria fund, and we've got a scholarship fund, and we have a student activities fund. Did I miss any? And the pool fund.
Yeah, community swim, right.
Communities, we call it the pool fund, because we run more than community swim through that. So there's, all of those funds have separate books that are capped, they have their own checking account, their own fund balance, things like that. So we'll talk more about that when we do our training.
You want to mention that, yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't mention the internal service fund. Correct, we have that as well.
Okay, so, thank you both for being here, thank you, Carl. We are going to move into our board agenda action items. These are items that you should expect to see on next month's board meeting for approval. This is kind of the opportunity, if you have specific questions about any of these items, we can ask our questions now, and then they're on the consent agenda as part of the finance portion of the consent agenda. So you have the monthly financial reports that you received. In addition, we're going to have a conversation about the contracts for the workman's compensation, I'm going to get to that one at the end. Anytime we have items that are disposed of, donated, you know, or given away or whatever, or sold, they're on this list, so we have 471 library books. We'll also be accepting gifts from, from Drexel University for Wayne Elementary School, from Villanova University for the Radnor High School Theater Department, and then you'll be opening, you must have opened the bids on December 4th, so we'll see a whole list of spring athletic equipment, it'll all be on the consent agenda. All righty, does, do you have any questions about that, Liz? Andrew? Lydia? Anyone? Nancy? I do have one, Bradley? I do have one question, Michelle, if you could please find out, I looked at the paperwork of the donation from Villanova University, the acceptance of the two MacBooks, and the way the paperwork read, they said, "Oh, it's an unknown value." We know the value of two MacBooks, and it should probably be on the paperwork for next, for the board meeting.
I'll make sure that that's included.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
One of our final items, oh, do we have any questions about the workman's comp? Okay. We had gone over that last month, this is intended to be a combination of some cost savings, but also just a desire to work with a different carrier for customer service and servicing reasons. Let's see, resolution, oh, so we need to, we need to make a recommendation to appoint a candidate to serve as a member of the board at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. So I think, I, as you know, I reached out to a number of you about this, I put it in an email, actually. Chuck Madden had been our board member, he's left the board, we need to fill his expiring term, it will end June 30th of 2022. I actually got a, it's a little bit of additional information about the, the time commitment on this item. I do have two board members who are interested in it, and it will require board meetings two Wednesdays per month, because you do need to serve on both the board and then a, a committee as well. You know, I, I don't know if the people who are interested want to speak up, or, you know, it's not, it, it just kind of is what it is, it's a pretty, it's, it sounds like it's going to be a pretty big job at this point. So we can either make a recommendation tonight, does anyone feel comfortable saying who's interested?
Just wait till next week, a little bit of time, let people talk.
Yeah, I mean, let's, if, kind of more in interest of time tonight, why don't we continue to talk about that? And, you know, we can make the recommendation at the board meeting, there's no reason to, you know, to not do that. All righty? And then we also have this Radnor Aquatics Club agreement. Michelle, do you want to go over that just quickly?
Sure, I can go over that. Radnor, the Radnor Aquatics Club has an agreement with the district, they've had it for some time, to use our pool facility for a minimum of 950 hours per year. That agreement expired June 30th of 2019, and since that time, the district representatives, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Freel, and myself have been meeting with Radnor Aquatic Club to try and come up with a new agreement. One of the things we had brought to the facilities committee a while back was a summary showing a lot of the costs that we have in conjunction with the pool. And while we recognize that we would have many of those expenses, whether or not Radnor Aquatic was using our pool, because we have a swimming and a diving team, and we also offer swimming as part of our physical fitness program, the Radnor Aquatic Club uses the pool the largest percentage of the time of the users, even more so than the district itself. So we met with them, we met with representatives, I know Mrs. Dunn and Mr. Miller were also part of some of those conversations, and talked about how we could come up with an agreement, and also the fact that we likely will be doing some pool renovations in the future, and that will probably result in the pool not being available for an extended period of time. So at this point in time, what we're recommending is, we're recommending that for the months of October and September, when we were negotiating with Radnor Aquatic, that we bill their, their hours that they used at their old rate, which was $15.47 per hour. And then moving forward, the remaining, the difference between what was used in September and October and the 950, that we bill out those hours at $35 an hour, and that that would be payable in three installments, as you can see there on the screen. And then hours in excess of the 950 would be billed at $50 an hour. They've also taken over our swimming lessons, which administration believes is a good thing for the district, we think that they can grow the program and actually offer a more rigorous swimming program, swim lessons program. Those hours will be billed at $75. Those hours will not be counted towards the 950, that'll be separate from the 950. And then when they have swim meets where they charge an admission, and they have several of those a year, they'll be a hundred dollar per hour fee, and then if they're the only ones using the pool that day, typically those meets run from seven o'clock in the morning till pretty late in the evening, there'll be a two-hour minimum charge for custodial cleaning on those days. None of those rates include the lifeguard or the supervisor, they'll be billed directly by IM Pools for those services, and this will only be through December, or for, through June of 2020. And what we'd like to do, once we approve this, and we will have the solicitor review the contract as well to approve the final contract, we'd like the board to approve the rates, but we'd like to start negotiating again with Radnor Aquatic to come up with another agreement for probably a shorter period of time, hopefully when we have more information about what will happen with the pool in the future.
Thank you for that recap, Michelle, I, I want to thank you, I know that this has been a really long process, and I know that a lot of work's been put into it by both you and, and Mark Brooks, so I really appreciate the two of you working together on that, bringing the information to our finance committee, you know, and going back to the Radnor Aquatic, I know that that was, it was, it was a lot of work, and I really do appreciate and acknowledge, you know, the, the time that was spent on that. And I think for now, you know, this is, given that we're about to enter a, you know, a, kind of an uncertain thing, depending on what we do with the facility, that a shorter-term lease made sense now, so thank you. Does anyone have questions about this? No? Okay, I'm just mindful of the time. Yes, no? Sarah?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure, because this one took us so long beyond the end of it, that we make sure that as soon as we have a sense of when and if the pool will be down, that we start negotiations on the next contract, since it seems like there are some issues we'll need to work through again the next one.
So we've, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Freel, and myself, we have a really good, open relationship with Radnor Aquatic, and I'm sure that conversations will continue with them. We, we want to partner with them in order for them to use our facilities, and we want to partner with them for the possibility of when our pool is closed. So we will continue those conversations with them, it'll be open conversation, they're just as anxious to find out what's happening with the pool as the rest of us are.
No, I just meant more in terms of certainty, both for us and for them, in terms of what's going on.
Okay, great, so seeing none, we should expect to see this on the agenda next week? Great, thank you. Is there any new business? No? Oh, yes.
I just have one more question about the audit report.
Sure. Go ahead, Bradley.
So the wheels were turning slowly, but I just wanted to catch up to one more question about the debt. I want to make sure that I'm reading this properly, so there was about 88 million of debt that the district has taken on, and I was understanding that, looking at our debt service on page 19, we paid about 6.7 million in debt service in 2018, and about 7 million in debt service in 2019. And on page 13, in the discussion of non-current liabilities, it looks like it said our general obligation debt decreased by 3.2 million dollars. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding and characterizing those numbers right.
That's correct. So what you'll see in some of those numbers, what we paid, what we, what you see on 19, that's, or 17, that's actually what we physically paid, what you see on the schedule about what, how much our debt decreased, that will include any bond refundings that we did and any savings. So anytime there's an opportunity for us to refund a bond, we do that, and we've been very successful at achieving very favorable savings.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great, is there any public comment? Welcome, Mr. Bajukas.
Are we going to take a break before we roll into facilities?
So, yep, no, this is your time, if, you know, if you haven't had a chance to do so afterwards, if you would just sign in for this meeting.
Absolutely.
Great, so welcome.
Bajukas, 228 South Wayne Avenue. I just wanted to talk for a second about the RAC contract, and just to, first of all, welcome to everybody, but I wanted to flag a couple of things that I think we should all be thinking about as we consider the rates, and we consider what we're going to do next with these kinds of groups that are using the, are you up here for rebuttal? She very slowly moved up next to me. So, just taking a step back, right, just, just taking a step back for just a second. So last board meeting, the RAC, we're seeing $15 an hour, last board meeting, the RAC representative said there's about 600 swimmers in RAC, and that means they've been basically paying about $25 a year each for the use of our pool. I have their tax forms, it's a, it's a public nonprofit, you can all access those. What you'll see is they, is they bring in revenue of about $370,000 a year, they have expenses of about $384,000 a year, they have $61,000 as of last year in their bank account. They pay $200,000 in salary. They pay $200,000 in salary, and they make about $100,000, $110,000 from swim lessons. So we're talking about an entity that brings in a lot of money. What's, what concerns me is that as we talk about improvements to the facility, we have a situation where they are, the, the amount of people that are brought onto our campus by any group is not being regulated by us, or by the board, by the citizens. And I have a concern, given what RAC, and given what the people said at the last meeting, of the safety of bringing in 600 people into that pool area, bringing in 3,000 people, which I think the number was, when you start including meets and things like that. So I would ask that any contract take into consideration an occupancy level at any point in time, because I wouldn't want us to get in a situation where we're violating an occupancy rule, and possibly, we're hearing about multiple people falling, getting stitches, going to the hospital, very dangerous situations on the decking itself. So I don't know if that's driven by the amount of people that are using it, but that's something on a going-forward basis we need to think about. The other thing we need to think about is that we charge our citizens $140 a year for use of that pool for citizen swim. So we need to have right sizing of the fee that we're charging RAC for the use of that facility. I know, I, I'm not sure right now we're looking at what it would cost them to go somewhere else, and judging what the value of our facility is in that regard, and I understand that, and I have a lot of respect, as you know, for Michelle and for Mark to do the right thing and to get this negotiated. I'm not saying go back or change any rates, but on a going-forward basis, we have a lot of, of youth groups that are using our facilities heavily, very, very heavily. And, you know, when, when it came time for the soccer club and the lacrosse club to get Anki Turfed, we said to them, you have to put into a fund to replace Anki Turf, because you're going to wear it out. And that's in the contract. They not only have to pay for the lights and security, the cost of operation, they also have to put aside money to keep that facility, so it's not coming out of our budget, it's not coming out of our education budget. To the extent that we can think along those lines with regard to RAC, and also make sure